I'd like to ask all the councillors. Welcome councillors, members of the executive, members of the press gallery are joining us and members of the public are joining us via live stream. Those indeed watching this on the action replay. Before we commence councillors, councillor Ben is subject, Mayor Ben is subject to a COVID test. Is it joining us via live stream as well? Councillor Ben, you wish to say a few words regarding the change to.
Thank you for deputising councillor Moore. Yes, still waiting on, on a COVID test pre-Christmas after an exposure sign in Robben Vale. So choosing to vacate the chair for the entirety of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ben. This one rural city council acknowledges the patient custodians of the land on which we make and pay respects to their elders in the past and present. Councillor McKay, prayer please.
We beseech you Lord that we may be granted wisdom, understanding and sincerity of purpose in the decisions we are called on to make the world there of the people of the rural city.
Thank you councillor McKay, please be silent. Judges, evidence for evidence for evidence. Directors and officers present, this is Carver Wood.
We have Bruce Myers, the Greens, Edelbert Eckover, Joel Weishke. Erin who's lifting, Robert Terry who's a fire.
Confirmation of minutes, I have a move to respect that the standing meeting of the council held on the 16th of November 2021. And the scheduled meeting of council held on the island of November 22nd. Councillor King, second to councillor Jeffrey, all eyes in favour. Past, yeah, this poses a topic of interest, do we have any disposals of topic of interest to me about ongoing changes to that? Well, if you don't, thank you. Our current address and ready of petitions, this is Carver Wood.
Thank you very much, Ted. Do you have a standing petition? As a petition ring, petition is to take the heritage of that by horse and dog watering trough. They're named by Annis and George Phils in its current position on Green Street, Ultima, just past the old water tower. You do not want to see it moved from its original position to any other place in Ultima. And there are a large number of signatures to that petition. And so currently petition was received on the 23rd November by hand. And basically the, really the members of the community that would like the trough to remain in its original position. And for your background information, the trough is actually on the council road resume. And as such is passed a street venture, that's all about more unusual street venture. And council has management of it. We didn't receive any formal request to move the trough. And if indeed there is one in future, we will ensure that there is community engagement by two or means, whether it's mail, drop through, social media, et cetera. I'd actually allow the community to actually design it. So I believe the trough was moved by some enthusiastic members of the community. Council has since replaced it in its original location. To the, except the original of the trough which had been damaged. Returned it to its original state. So in effect, the trough is back where it originally was. It repairs it.
The petition was.
I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. Who was that, councillor Jeffrey? Speaker's on any of this?
Names that are culturally sensitive and submitted used towards white predilections on that. And we can acknowledge that the asset naming map list itself lacks diversity in regards to pre-approved names. And that should be updated and that is part of the recommendation in this report today. The third submission suggested that all age are great. And the fourth submission was from the only source, the westernmost section of the South West Building Precinct. And they outlined some of the reasons why the name of the main thoroughfare and true that subdivision needs to be something that is more meaningful to the council. And they objected to the name Ash Rose for the Boulevard, not for the name itself, but for the name being used as naming the main thoroughfare. Having said that, our recommendation is for council to adopt the six names for the residential streets, to seek an inclusive name from the asset register to the main east-west arterial road, which in the subdivision shows as Ash Rose Boulevard and through the public submissions, and then to seek to update the asset naming map list to be more diverse and inclusive.
Questions please, councillors.
The only question I have, Mr. Carter, is an issue of Abbey, Ronnie Court. If they are compliant, if you also put in the, with their naming principles, you've come and set us too long. Did the actual people look at naming the streets opposite maybe like instead of Piper having Abbey Avenue and Ronnie Court side by side? So being sure they get in, I think it's very appropriate that those names are included. But did they look at individual streets for other of those two names?
I haven't seen anything that suggests that they did. But I can't speak when we have good development, they may have been seen as earlier. All we can see is what they're putting in their submission when they propose the names as part of the subdivision.
Do you have a question, councillors?
Oh, reverse better recommendation.
councillor Jeffrey, do you have a second? Councillor, yes. Please, councillor Jeffrey.
I'm going to amend the amendment. I'm saying you've got the line, there's a Ronnie Court and instead of Parker Avenue, name that Abbey Avenue and swap Parker with Northgate. The Northgate's only a street on where the property don't, well, that's at least one of those lines, so that's what I'm suggesting. They've got the names of Ronnie Court, Abbey Avenue, don't have a Northgate Street and just the name of the court in there. But the amendments, adopt the proposal, the new street, as the amendment is tucked, Ronnie Court, Abbey Avenue, and get rid of Northgate, all the other stuff. Where the, we just remember that the property can become on the bank. You don't have to do that in motion, that's the street. There's no difference.
That has been moved as amendment. Do you have a second for that amendment? Second, councillor King. You can speak to the motion, councillor.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Yeah, look, it's, I understand the names given by the developers is probably, but I think those two names specifically, look at the reason why they've been put up. Abbey, Ronnie, the first two names in a set of triplex, the board is on it, the babies are terrible, money is foot. Unfortunately, those precious babies passed away sooner after birth. I'm concerned, I think it's very appropriate that we have those names in this area. I'm concerned if we leave them together, they may not get anything under the naming conventions because of the two names together, whereas I believe of putting it as Abbey Avenue and Ronnie Court, they're side by side in the streets, in what, short life they had and into the future. And Northgate, removing Northgate, it's only a street where the properties of the two developers, the developer and their friend, the original properties lived on, so I believe that was appropriate. We could change that to Parker, maybe. But the only street we're taking here is Northgate, which is a street where properties were on, not actually properties. And I think it's more important to, the thirty-two names, Abbey and Ronnie are the important ones, or make sure that they get it used to that.
Question or topic, I'm sure. Parker Street, sure.
Well, we're taking, we're taking property, I had to say property here. So all the amendments say. Okay, the Northgate, the Northgate comes here and Parker becomes there.
So it's a strong, the strike, Parker, that's all.
Oh, sorry.
Just a power of.
Yes, sorry, yes. The Northgate comes here, which is direction in some ways as well, if you, I think that's appropriate. And to be sure that those two names given are equally important for that thing.
Is that's now correct? councillor King, did you want to speak to the motion?
Just briefly, thank you. I agree, councillor Feig, that it's important those names be recognised. And whilst Abbey, Ronnie Court might, or with convention, et cetera, et cetera, it needs to be mindful. However, the amendment suggests the whole council recognizes those names in two separate streets, so that the integrity of that is not lost in the naming. But navigating to that area in particular, particularly those with modern GPS systems, et cetera, navigating to Abbey, Ronnie Court could be, could be helpful.
Any further speakers for the motion? Speaker against the motion. They know, we'll go to a vote, the last favor. Very different. The motion now becomes a motion. Oh, sorry. The motion now becomes a motion.
It's all been said, Mr. Mayor, I think it's, nothing more to say. It's just to be sure that those two names are the most important, whatever lines of approval, we're going to make sure we do it.
Fast question. Once we're back at this decision, does the developer have any avenue to appeal or would make up or is it fast?
True, Mr. Mayor. Given that we are proposing to make some changes, we will need to go back to the development to confirm, asking that that is acceptable change. But I don't see that the change is too big for us to have to advertise again. So I think it's just a conversation of the two.
Did I disagree? Did I have, did I come back to us? Maybe I do, did I have a minute?
I don't think technically they have been my back, but we will look.
I can.
Councillor King.
Nothing further than that.
That's right. Further speakers for the motion? Yes, councillor.
I'd just like to acknowledge the sensitivity and expertise of councillor McPhee and councillor King of altering the motion.
Can you put the speaker's against the motion? Councillor, please. David, the last favor. Very. Twenty-three, twenty-one point one one four, asset disposal policy and memorials policy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Those two policies are here for their in your reviews. No change has been made to the policies and they are presented here for council to adopt to their wish. I can speak more on the policies, but in terms of changes, they still change me.
Any questions, councillors? This is councillor.
These are policy as such, and underneath the policy sits the procedure, which is fine for the council. Could you just explain very briefly how the procedure works with the policy? Quite publicly and easily understood.
Absolutely true, Mr. Chair. The procedure indicates the policy, the policy sets the principles by which we abide, and then the procedure describes the process by which we define the policy. In some instances, in those archetypal instances, for example, they also form a full part of the process. So we have the policy, we have the procedure, and then we have associated forms.
In regard to public memorials, what is the, briefly, and the procedure so that the public understands what happens? So that we make sure that these, these memorials are safe and in an appropriate place, but also people have the opportunity.
So in very high level, the process is for someone who wishes a memorial to be erected in the municipality to fill in a special form that actually specifies what is the memorial for? Who is, sorry, who is the person whom the memorial is going to be erected? What are some of the preferred places and types of memorials? And then it gets assessed to make sure that it's safe, that it's consistent with the area which the memorial was proposed to be developed. Then it goes to consultation with the close family of the person to whom the memorial is to be erected, to make sure that that is consistent with their wishes and it is in keeping of the memory of their loved ones. And then if all of these boxes are ticked, it goes out for community consultation to make sure that we are not missing relevant information before the decision is made on a memorial being placed. In practical terms, in most cases, it could be applied on a bench or a bus shelter or the likes, so easy to maintain. And the procedure also specifies that we cannot guarantee that the memorial will stay in perpetuity, and it also assigns the costs for the upkeep of the memorial.
Thank you.
You have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just really quickly, in the report that it says there's been one request for a memorial over the past year, I'm just curious as to whether the bulk of requests that we get are from, for roadside memorials or whether we get most of them for parkland and public space memorials? And is there a difference in the procedure for any of those?
True, Mr. Chair, there's no difference in the procedure. They both need to assess the safety and the appropriateness of the memorial. We seem to get more requests for memorials of a space that's significant to the person whose memory a memorial is to be erected, although it's still a lot whole. So it depends on the wishes of the requests that, and I can't tell you that there's been a big influx of memorials over the last few years. I think we've done two in the last four years, and one has been a part of one that's been on a roadside. So equals split out of the two. With the mayor.
Any further questions, councillors? Any further questions, can have a move, please. Move to councillor McKay. Speaker King. Speaker, councillor McKay.
Quite straightforward, but if you thought that we have a policy and there's no memorials are erected in at home, why, and it's quite the proceeding of the council.
Please, give the speaker's call against the motion. You can vote, councillor. Yes, you can vote, the last favor. Endlessly. Twenty-three, twenty-one point one one five, procurement policy. Mr. Leskey, please.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. The Local Government Act requires council to adopt procurement policy in clause section 108 of the Act by the thirty-first December of twenty twenty-one. The Act requires council to prepare and adopt procurement policy which specifies principles, processes and procedures applying in respect to the courses, goods and services of carrying out council work. A review of its procurement policy is required at least once during the four-year term of the council. One Hill Rural City Council is part of the Lawton Mallie Procurement Network, which comprises can pass be, Reddick Bendigo, Central Goldfields, Bullock, Gannawarra, and Alexander Macedon Angels, Mldura Lawton, and Swan Hill. The focus of the Local Government Act is on collaborative procurement, and the Lawton Mallie Procurement Network has decided amongst our house, agreed amongst ourselves, a collaborative approach in which we have a unified approach to the main policy, allowing freedom and ease of movement for collaborative work to occur. The key change to the policy this year from last year is that the conflict of interest must be determined for the entire procurement process, including the preparation of tender documents and the writing specifications, not only the evaluation status where it was in prior years. Consideration of collaborative procurement wherever possible. Council reports recommend that commencing a procurement process must set out information relating to opportunities for collaborative procurement if available, and including the nature of those opportunities, if there are any. And councils or public bodies with which they are available, and why council did or did not pursue the identified collaboration in relation to that process. Training is required. All council staff must undertake professional training every two years. And the staff who breach the policy will require to undertake immediate retraining. Procurement policy determines the thresholds that exclude, the thresholds that apply and excludes GST. Previously, these thresholds were determined by the Act and included in GST. There are a number of appendices attached to this report, and the appendices outline the opposite operational requirements that you need to each council, and these may be altered or approved by the CEO if required and are required to be included in the total policy document, however, are not part of the approval process for today. Based upon this, council can choose to either adopt or amend the recommendation. We would recommend that council adopt this procurement policy as presented.
Any questions, councillors? Yes, councillor McKay.
In regard to the exemption, are the councillors, or when an exemption occurs?
In what?
Oh, in any one of them.
And not, so there will be parts of procurement that need to come to council for approval and exemptions related to those processes. Well, exemptions outside of that will be dealt with in delegations as they sit within the business. Not every exemption will come to council.
Further questions?
Yes, I'd just like to ask a question. Can you just give us an example of where there's been collaboration working together?
To date, the only collaborative piece we have done is very recently on the IOT, or Incident of Things, which was actually a government-funded process where we worked together with Mldura, Big Bullock, Gannawarra, on certain technologies that we can share the information between all parties and that information. So from a Swan Hill perspective, we put water sensors in recreational grounds like Robert Vale, that will allow us to share live information across the multiple local government areas. Where it's envisaged in the future, which has not quite happened to date, but if there is large amounts of simulation work done by all the council, possibly to put collective agreements in for large-scale works, work across groups of councils that would have similar needs and requirements and enable all volume scale purchasing to be at a better price and work with other councils, but not specifically in large-scale work at this point in time, but it will be in progress in the future.
You have a question? Yes, councillor, you have a question?
Oh, thank you, sorry, it can be quite hard to hear. Just in regard to, just in regard to the conflict of interest change to this policy, I'm just wondering if that leads to or will change the way in which we go about the entire procurement process? And does it mean we have to start thinking about or going about procurement in a more holistic way if conflict of interest has to be determined for the entire process?
We probably need to move to a more holistic view, you're quite correct, they're better. However, this isn't going to make a huge difference to our procurement process. We already have conflict of interest in it, it's just a matter of the front that people who are putting the specifications together make the claim that they have no conflict of interest. Therefore, they possibly haven't spoken to related parties to guide them in making their specifications, which will create a competitive advantage to other people who may have that knowledge. It's just ensuring that the whole process from start to finish hasn't had the opportunity have been manipulated to get a certain outcome, which is highly unlikely to have occurred today. It's just making sure that the process doesn't occur in the future.
Thank you.
Any further, any contest?
Just on that, for half thirty-four, I forgot, a, someone watched the documents for the procurement, the specifications, provided to a heavily equipment unit that might have been, but that then won't be out. To what that would be detailed.
No, reasonably speaking, there probably more than one person would have the knowledge to be able to write a specification. So if it's a piece of heavy machinery equipment, there are a number of staff at the depot who would be qualified to be able to talk the specification, what they need, what it would mean if that particular person were not able to involve in writing the specification to ensure that the foreword is put there and it's not tailored towards one direction. So there will be other staff available who should have the skill set to be able to draw them.
Any questions, councillors? Any further motions, Mr. Mayor?
It'll probably be a good step forward, bringing in one of the local government act twenty twenty. But procurement is always a major, the council is one of the biggest employers, and the biggest procurement is in the municipality. And we do have a waiting system where while we do all the local processes, if we can, local suppliers, but we don't negate others as well. So that can get less leave for the dollar, and by involving those ten other councils, or one other council with us, I intend, it gives us a greater opportunity for the bigger projects. If you're able to put in a better ten, that can get better value. And I think it's a good step forward.
So there's a complex, this is a complex area for anyone to navigate, whether you're a council, working for a council. Speaking of the whole process, I'm sure there are, so that's actually, put it out documents, they are equal to the one. To powerful, and you have a question about that. I would say. We're maybe should back from our back.
Speaker's for the motion. Against the motion. Big difference in debate. Okay, go to vote, the last favor. Endlessly. Twenty-three, twenty-one point one one, chief executive officer employment and remuneration policy. Mr. Leskey, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. The Local Government Act requires council to develop, adopt and keep in force a chief executive officer employment and remuneration policy by the thirty-first December twenty twenty-one. We have conducted a review to expand our existing policy, bringing it to line with the new legislative requirements. Council's existing performance review policy has been reviewed and to make sure it's compliant with section forty-five of the Local Government Act. As such, through, provides guidance to councils on the management of the life cycle of the CEO's employment. Procedure provides clear processes for all aspects of the CEO's employment, including the establishment, composition and responsibilities of the Employment Remuneration Committee, contract for the of employment, including maximum and minimum terms and conditions and requirements, remuneration expenses outlined in the CEO performance objectives and annual reviews, and recruitment, including acting or interim CEO employment. Now, the chief executive officer remuneration policy is required under the Act, and a delayed endorsing is today may be implemented, and implementing this policy may result in non-compliance with the Act. I'll take the policy as read and happy to take questions from councillors on that.
Questions, councillors? Questions, okay. Councillor, maybe, thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one question, in the report, we have financial implications not applicable to this report. However, and I realise we don't talk about, we don't talk figures in the policy, however, it does talk about the addition of an independent professional person. So I'm just wondering, wouldn't this have significant financial and or economic implications on the report?
At this stage, I mean, apart from the CEO's salary, which obviously is discussed in meetings, it's also a budgetary issue, it is an ongoing one. There is no clear indication of the cost of providing an independent service at this stage. It could be minor, it could be significant, depending on the level of engagement that council laws require that independent person to do. At this stage, we have the budgetary capacity to absorb that for the coming years. We don't see that as a huge financial implication.
Thank you, just wondered why that was left out, thank you.
Any further questions? They know, can I ask for a move, please? Speaker McPhee, speaker councillor Jeffrey. Speaker, councillor, councillor McPhee.
No, we're sure, down three, perfectly, previous policy up there, but we just never start the process. Getting used to the, and on that much, I think, acting CEO, evidently, that's present account, from the end of the time.
Speaker, yes, councillor.
Oh, I think it's good that the process and the policy is out in the open, in the public, that they can, you know, it was interesting to understand how we're undertaking the process, that there is a formality to it that in line with the Local Government Act.
Councillor, any further speakers for the information? They know, councillor McPhee, yes, the vote, the vote, the last favor. Endlessly. Twenty-three, twenty-one point one one, this report to council is for council to note that the minutes from the ninth September twenty twenty-one order of risk committee meeting have now been signed and to update the council the items that were discussed on the agenda of that meeting. So on the meeting of ninth September, the risk management update was delivered, internal audit updates on the recommendations from previous reports and were discussed, and many asset revaluations for twenty twenty, one of the third value report was discussed. The annual financial report for financial year twenty twenty-one was the council, the order committee approved and recommended the report be adopted by council. The forward statements of financial year twenty twenty-one, where the order committee approved and recommended the report be adopted by council. Outstanding and excessive league balances was an item the order committee requested further information and monitoring of this in future meetings. Pandemic planning and response was discussed, significant legislative changes affected councils were discussed and expected an actual frauds that are breaches by the law, of the law by management. Questions, councillors? Questions, can have a move, please. Speaker McKay, speaker councillor McPhee. Speaker, councillor McKay.
I would want to say, all councils that record or do a legislation, have a number of risk committee, we're already conversing with the members, even if it's on the community, they are very common. And you're wanting to go, I mean, I'm just making sure that checks and balances are there.
Speaker's for the motion? Against the motion? Last favor, councillor McKay, we'll go to a vote, the last favor. Very, endlessly. Twenty-three, twenty-one point one one, any major project plan?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So the major project plan covers the financial years of twenty-three to twenty thirty two and is prepared to present for council adoption. It is also in line with our current ten-year financial plan and has been devised in line with our funding constraints. This plan strikes a balance between affordability, new assets and infrastructure for our communities, and appropriate renewals of existing infrastructure that exist today. Community planning, funding of over three point seven million over the ten years included projects across all our smaller townships and municipalities. The plan now had sixty-six million in capital funding for roads over ten years, including expected ongoing roads through recovery ground funding. This capital funding is in addition to the ongoing maintenance. Improving efficiency through the implementation of data and I test to this, what we call business functionality is a major focus for council, as is waste recycling, landfill sort of destruction. This, the first year of this bill will form the basis for our budget preparation for the next financial year and will allow us to be able to. Um, this, the first year of this bill will form the basis for our budget preparation for the next financial year and will allow us to be able to set that for ongoing, for the ongoing needs and to build the base for the ongoing change in the financial plan. Uh, this year, we presented it to you with our ten year capital delivery program of the funded programs to give a clear indication of what money we have and how that's going to roll out over the ten years. We had included a separate listing of projects outside of the delivery cycle of this plan and including the plan, these were previously our unhunted items, as you could have seen. These are a list of items that when funding becomes available, projects, when funding can become available through the grants and, and other mechanisms that we have available to us. And make their way onto the delivery program, let's say, at this stage, they aren't funded, but they are programmed to actively be ready for, ready for implementation when the funding arrives. Uh, we do know that the availability of certain services are becoming quite hard and may impact the delivery of this program. Ability to things like earth moving and building trade contractors may affect the delivery of the first two years of plan. This is due to a housing burn, a backlog of work for eighteen months, COVID restrictions, this was money that we have been receiving from, like, the federal government. Um, we recommend that council adopt this ten year major project plan as presented and refer projects identified in financial year one to the budget process. Coming. Any questions?
Questions, councilors? No questions whatsoever, okay, can I have a favor, please? Do you have a question, please, second question, please? Speak to the motion, please.
Um, the ten year major project plan outlines in, and various projects, some very exciting and others absolutely essential. Um, it's been, it's not a crisis, councils to play a part in, um, helping to prioritize and, uh, make the council complete together, there's a lot to look forward to in that.
Yes, we can.
Yeah, so, uh, so counsel, K's words that, yeah, it is, it is important, it is important to have a plan. Um, as we know, all plans are really set in chelie, and so it is a ten year plan, so over the ten year period, we will see plans, uh, change. Um, and so the community should be aware of that, that it's, just because it's a ten year plan, doesn't mean that, um, great ideas or great opportunities can come up. Sometime in the next ten years can't be included in the plan because it's something we're reviewing annually. Um, like, it really only sort of sets itself for one year of budget, but that gives us a plan for the future. So, um, I think the important thing to note is that scoping projects, as you said, um, it's a bit of a bottleneck, um, for council at the moment, so we need to be aware of that. We need to appropriately fund, um, any resource, uh, the, the, provide human resources to be able to, to get projects, but, uh, ready, so that we are ready to go, so that when opportunistic funding comes from state, state governments, we can act on that policy. So, um, again, the office is doing a great job, uh, but we as council need to support them, um, and where we can, support them with the appropriate.
Quick, just for the motion, yes, go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted to say, um, thank you to staff for doing such a good job putting it all together and bringing us with really good information. Um, and going on to councillor King's comment about how we can change it, but I also think it's important that we don't make too many changes and jeopardize what we've already got in there and then take that anymore.
Further speakers for the motion, against the motion?
I want to add.
I was sorry.
Um, I just wanted to add that I think it's great that we've added a list of unhunted projects, it's certainly much more easy to understand for the community and for us councillors, how, how we think that these are aspirational projects that are supported by our council, but they're not. I think it's a better document than a
Here, um, go to the back, for all those favor. There can endlessly. What the B twenty one point one nine nine, same fifteen Feltman Lane, Swan Hill, uh, there's your castle, Donington, the old, uh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. The Lake Voguer Question Center Incorporated is in the process of finalizing an occupancy lease with Royal City Council. Fondle Pony Club has vacated fifteen Feltman Lane, assigned to Sub East with the Lake Voguer Western Center Incorporated. This report is seeking council's approval to dispose of fifteen Feltman Lane in line with the requirements of the Local Government Act, now deemed surplus to council's requirements. Um, the land is, it's a two point seven hectare piece of land, it is shared located on the northwest portion of the site, and it's scattered mature vegetation near the shed on the southern and western boundaries. Other lands within the vicinity of the site is used for living purposes currently, but more intensive residential developments are expected to commence around it in future years. Uh, so this saying council will have to make potential purchases aware of the need for hard infrastructure, such as bleak obstructed roads and an intersection drainage servicing on the side towards standard capacity to support conventional residential subdivisions in the future. Consultation will be required in accordance with the council's community engagement policy and per the S one one four, the Local Government Act requires, uh, participatory engagement for the sale of land. Would include advertising in the Guardian newspaper, a notice on council's website noting, uh, notifying the public that council intention to sell the land and request of emissions or or against the sale of the land twenty eight days, publishing of the advertisements. Any funds received from this sale will be allocated for land sales reserve to be utilized as council attorney. Uh, we are asking the council, uh, has the option to proceed or not proceed with the disposal of this property? We ask, we recommend the council gives public notice to sell fifteen Feltman Lane, Swan Hill Parish Castle, Donington, by public tender, and seeks admission to propose sale of the joint S one one four of the Local Government Act. If no submissions against the sale of property received, authorize officers to proceed with the press for proposals for redevelopment of the land by a public.
Questions, councilors? Yes, me, please.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Chair, just quickly, and this may be commercial and conference, so a simple yes or no answer will suffice. Has there been any inquiry on the purchase of that land at Feldman Lane, um, from, from the private sector or any government departments? I would assume that it's potentially a very, very valuable piece of property.
Yes, we've had inquiries.
Is there any questions, councilors?
Oh, I mean, that's kind of the record, please.
To the resignation, Senator, uh, councillor King, do you suspect the resignation, can it start the motion, can it different?
Yeah, like, this block of land has, um, been in a bit of a drawn out crisis, relocated this one, we're trying to cover it, you know, but being the order going to cover to get out to like, oh, it's fantastic that they've been out to establish out there. Um, this block of land is part of the South West Development, all this other, uh, boss. Um, could you make it in, and it wasn't thought of, so part of the process. Yeah, well, that happened, supportive of the proposal, and to, to, to
Okay, just briefly, uh, supported by guest, Jeff, said, uh, that's, yeah, I think it's, especially in the service of council requirements, and it's fitting that we sell it by public tender, um, to, uh, one, 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 ten, to reverse, really concept, but, but it fits in with the, uh, concept of, of the, the South West place.
Further speakers for the motion? His permission, first debate, council, different. Go to the vote, all those favor. Endlessly. I can be one, uh, twenty one point one two zero, if this, if this is required as part of Victoria's big deal social area, do bring you.
Deputy Mayor. Council's aware of Victoria's big bill, which is a program of community infrastructure, in particular, the housing bill, for which fifteen million dollars were evenly allocated. Um, offices certainly have been dealing with both the state government, social housing bodies, as well as the private sector, who are considering social housing to spell. Um, of concern, however, which M A V has alerted, all councils have brought out a proposal by the state government for, uh, rates to be for gone, for social housing. Being this report that we estimate is, well, we know there are four hundred and thirty seven houses owned by the, uh, families, fairness and houses. It's put a price to over five hundred thousand dollars each year, or more, if you get this rate happening. Or five point five million dollars for, for gone rates that we're Also know there's a number of dwellings owned by organizations, which have been home. They're not so clear on how many of those are M A V has suggested the council supports that particular program by writing to local, um, and developing, particularly seen on this Report recommends that we use that we brought to the M A V, support area program, those rights and all that, um, now that we're in this
Questions, councilors, yes, cancel. Um, through John, the terminology roster is very confusing, um, he's saying that, so what you're saying is effectively, the state, if I read this directly, the, the state government can basically say, um, these, the, the, this social housing will be rate free, and then there's not a thing, not a damn thing we can do to, other than this type of issue to oppose that.
Those are these two, they're just like They are looking at a shared state government, local government compact, bringing in John Howard. I mentioned And then, on charity, and then they're just like Oh, we don't
Sorry, further question, is, is there, um, any, talk of any sort of level of compensation from state government to, to local government as a result of this? Okay.
Yes, I just had a question, question about, um, what's your pay rates? I think, I'm not too sure about the structure, what's going to happen with social housing, like, the people who own the houses, and if they had to pay rates, they would pay them.
The, um, so what happens now, Joel will correct me if I'm wrong, but if the state government owns the house, the state government pays rates, if it's paving homes, owns the house, paving homes pays. Like any owner of the property pays rates and the tenants, will, will they re- recompense the rates through, through it?
Doesn't there be much underneath the state government, is that why they're paying this? That there's going to be a big payment by the state government, there is a payment for the rates on those areas.
Currently estimated that the, um, state government pays the extent of one hundred and thirty something million dollars a year, thanks. That, that's underpinned, so obviously in, in Swan Hill, uh, the D H, sorry, the D F H in houses in Swan Hill is more just in excess of one hundred thousand in rates annually that they pay us. State governor pays us in rates for those houses.
They're going to avoid that.
They will avoid that, yeah.
It gets largely around, like, the government having its, um, hand in social housing and, and governments wild, throwing councils tribute to social housing. Or a loss of right.
Um, apologies, this is, not known, in other states, does anyone know? It's a totally new proposal. No, I'm not sure.
Um, the decision include, it's like, uh, cabbage bean, maybe, we're talking bean, maybe, that sort of thing, or is it just purely simply public rights?
Don't know about that, it wouldn't include the fire levy, fire level. Um, but, but I guess it wouldn't include. Not clear, that's what I'm going to
The montron might be very unclear.
And how figures of pure rates, not, or waste, not yet, that's how pure rates was, absolutely.
Friends, the reality will be that, um, we're subject to rate capping, um, well, is this the reality? Uh, we, council will not collect any more in rates, um, or like, other than the rate cap, but this, uh, deficiency will just fall onto other rate payers. We'll determine, we'll just impress, um, we'll still get the same dollar amount with the rate cap, but sharing it with, will just be shared across all the other rate payers. When council won't miss out on the five hundred thousand, we will still get that by sharing it with all the other rate payers, is that the reality?
Yes, it's council's decision to make at the end of the day, you can grow the five hundred thousand a year and just keep collecting the rates, or you can spread it across all rate payers, with the, the need to make up that five hundred.
We don't make up the five hundred thousand, then is it the reality that we will cut services or release staff or, you know, diminish our service provision somewhere? Less roads, less work on roads, less maintenance, is that the reality? Further questions, councilors? There are no further questions, can I have a favor, please?
I'll move, Mr. Chair.
Yes, may I, then? Who did you move the motion?
Oh, I'll move the motion.
Yes, and second counsel, my friend. Uh, do we speak to the motion, David?
I will speak to the motion very briefly. Um, we already have a lot of issues, as we know, in rural councils when it comes to the rate system as it currently stands in this rate capping environment. This may make it easier, as, uh, councillor Moore alluded to earlier. It may make it easier for us, particularly the isolated rural councils, to maintain our assets, roads, plant equipment, let alone provide new services or to expand. Um, taking half a million dollars worth of rate each year that other rate payers will no doubt have to make up, um, for community services, just another attempt for the state government, it seems, to cost shift to local government and the tier of shifting to local government, which is the tier of government that can least afford it. So I'm all for supporting the M A V's advocacy in relation to the proposal to exempt social housing dwellings from paying rates for local services that they do ultimately use. I'm all for social housing, and I absolutely agree, we certainly need more of it, but not at this kind of cost and burden to other rate payers, thank you.
May I, then? Yes, my favor. Yeah, thanks, Chair, but this is another case of the state government, as you've already said, it's cost shifting. They do it to local government all the time. No one's saying, hey, you're the government, we don't need affordable housing in the top of it, in these areas, we definitely do. But it shouldn't come at a cost to our other rate payers. This is a job that could state government should be funding, not local government, and they're just trying to cost shift again, which is, they're already going by restricting our rates to rate capping. We can't raise our rates higher than the two percent or whatever they will pass each year, which we don't in the past, or many of these in our own council, but it was going around that mark. But this is just another case of cost shifting by the state government, and we shouldn't accept that, we just can't sit back and say, yes, we'll cover it again, another kick in the back. So we're saying no to this, thank you, Mr. Chair. Counselor, I think, any further speakers? Yes, cancel.
Well, I've spoken on that, so, because cost shifting, every other state government agency pays other agencies' fees, or hiring, or hiring, way down to ours. Um, rates are charged against, as businesses, commercial, and social, or the whole. But I'm reading, um, a portion of those right of property, and I'm asking everyone else to, to, to cover that, of the taxpayers, or when they pay, they have to believe. Um, social housing is definitely needed, so pay the tax, the payers, or some of them pay. The votes are collected, so Uh, or, or
Here, the speaker's for the motion. There you go, councilor, give us a close to the vote.
No, I mean, I think it's all been said, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
May I, then? Uh, on the out, go to the vote, the last favor, the motion, ask endlessly. What the B twenty one point one two one, future events, uh, Mr. Envisors.
Hey, Mr. Deputy Mayor, well, this report is about some good news, I think. Which is always nice to talk about. Um, council, as you're aware, you allocate funds each year for event sponsoring or assisting event organizers to run events across the county. Of course, um, in COVID times, we've had, uh, many events not, not proceed, and unfortunately
And unfortunately, the seniors tennis championship to be held in January is not the same. Uncertainty around COVID. Um, we know we are going to have lots of visitors in town, um, normally in January. Proposal is to use some of the events funding that we do have available for a neon lights event. This will complement other activities that council has organised, which is around physical entertainment in CBD throughout January on Friday. The report does say that the event is subject to regional roads authority approval. I'm pleased to say we have got a very quick. Report. Um, so it's done. Well, we have neon lights in Calum Street Road Reserve, senior road reserve. Um, for ten nights, getting two weekends and those days in January mentioned. Um, we think it will aid getting visitors that are in. Ability to come and visit the neon lights, take photos, but also send money hopefully at our hospitality. And at least we all can see the retail shops and hopefully return. Well, that's the event one. The second event is an actually an application received from AFL Centre Victoria has reflected three thousand dollars. To assist in the running of a. AF, uh, the under eighteen's football competition. Represented by the Benigo Chinese. From the Benigo Chinese. In May next year. There will be, the local AFL will be running events for junior footballers as well on the day, both girls and boys. Anticipated for family and friends. Um. The recommendation is both these events be supported. Firstly, the neon lights event for up to twenty thousand dollars to run that in the Calum Street meetings. To, um, my children for those folks in January and three thousand dollars on Tuesday. Where if we can add, please. I will, um, just also comment on the neon lights proposal. Should it be successful, there is thoughts that we may be trying to run these around the municipality. The recommendation.
Do, uh, may I then, do you have a question?
I did, but Miss Green has just answered it. It was with regard to the neon lights. If this was successful, then would there be thoughts in the future to moving it to the small towns throughout the municipality? But it's been answered, so thank you.
The money for the two projects, Miss Green, are they extra funding? Or are they, is that the funding that was coming together, the, um, the seniors tennis?
It's, it's money that's making the fund, um, so, uh, we carry over them, um, to the seniors tennis. For next year, um, but there is still extra, um, that's. Because, because we carried over from last year as well.
That's right, that's right. Just make sure we're good. And then just, then you're just going to make sure we do it one. This is different.
That's the term for the neon lights, um, two courses of security. It's going to do the, the two legs, not just the rear. And opposite Campbell Street alternative.
Um, Campbell Street alternative locations. I'll do that one first. So there's a number of, um, sections along Campbell Street, so outside near the Anfield Bank. I'm in the corner of, uh, McCray and Campbell. So there's some, it, where the footpath's really wide with no seats and other furniture, there's good locations along there. Um, in terms of security, uh. It will be our normal security that. It, um, they, they have been used in a lot of other places, including Melbourne, very low damage. They will stay on till. We, we get to time and we make it turn on.
Further questions, councillors? Can I move the place?
If there's no more questions, Mr Mayor, I'm happy to move the motion as per the recommendation.
May I then, that's, that's.
Oh, Mr Deputy, wow, let's have it, sorry.
Right, you're speaking to the motion, may I then?
Really quickly, thank you, Mr Chair. Um, look, our tourism and hospitality industries have been hit over the last two years. Then they get up and then they get hit and then they get up and they get hit and fall down again. And they've just had it really, really rough. And I think with two amazing events, neon lights is something that the light thing is really on trend at the moment. So I think we're really catering to an emerging market there. And this is Swan Hill Rural City Council. We're a footy town, whether, you know, individuals like it or not, we are. So to be able to have an N A B league game here on a Sunday, no doubt, so it gives everyone the chance to go after our local football netball has been played. Um, I think it would be remiss of us not to support the tourism and hospitality and as well as junior sport in our municipality.
Uh, may I then say exactly what I was going to say if I got to move the motion. Under the head.
The deputy, do you mean to speak? Do you have speakers for the motion?
Yes, I, I'd just like to say I think this is a great, positive, happy sort of an event to have happen to what we really need in the moment, coming out of COVID. So I think it's really great.
Any further speakers for the motion? Keep the motion. Uh, may I then, you want to close the vote?
Only really quickly, quickly, thank you, Mr Chair, just that, um, once these have been approved at council meeting today, we should start telling everyone that they need to come and that these events are going to be held so people can make plans to visit the Swan Hill region, um, on these dates.
Thank you, may I then? Now go to vote, twice the vote. Very unanimously. Question B, twenty one point one, double two, thrive by five, please.
Thank you, Chair and councillors. Uh, this report is in response to a request from the Minduru Foundation as to formally endorse the Thrive by Five campaign. We apologise, I left some words from a previous report and summaries, I disregard that. Basically, the Thrive by Five campaign acknowledges the course of the first five years of life when the brain develops to ninety percent of its power size. So after we get to that point, it's all downhill from there. Um, now early learning can help give children the best start to life and council adopted its first early to middle years plan in the last twelve eighteen months. Um, this campaign aligns very much with, uh, trying to address the issues that are beyond council's control. Of all councils and lots of private providers involved with various forms of childcare. Um, it is still something that is, um, that is regulated and co-funded or co-supported by the federal government. Federal government funding hasn't kept pace with, uh, society as it's developed. So it's getting to the point that there's no equality between early childhood services and disability and quality of educational access. So the report presents there a lot of information that's being quoted directly out of the campaign, but it wouldn't be uncommended at councils because it would. That's a big focal point of, um, the early to mid years plan. So the idea of recommendations for this report, that we actually formally endorse it, council formally endorses it. And we write to all the relevant representative groups, members of parliament, try and push that message about. Completely overholding the early childhood care. Making it more equitable for everyone.
Mr, questions, councillors? Questions? Um, okay, yeah, I'm moving the place.
Oh, sorry.
It's councillor Jeffrey, thinking of councillor McKay, just speaking to the motion, councillor.
Absolutely, thank you. So as a clarity, this is charge here right now, fully supported. Our friends and family as well. Of course, it's twenty seven percent of our camp guys. It actually. But it is, which of us, I think we've got a good, okay, call. Um, and all my students. Um, as a report, put together, um, to pay our, to, um, the, the sometimes. Then, that's a sidebar. But it's. Earn a lot of support.
Yes, my good.
I think all the research has shown over a long period of time that it's good that children start, um, formal and quality education. Not necessarily full time or five day a week, that, that, the much better their outcomes are. And so to have that universal across our country and acceptable and that type of quality is really essential. Um, that every child gets a chance in life.
Any speakers for the motion? Against the motion? And do you wish to propose the debate, councillor? Okay, we'll go to a vote, twice the vote. Mr Endersley. What's a big twenty one point one, two, three? What about councillor down against to outside for the whole vote?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Um, councillor, as we know, each year we review, we assume for county delegates to the various organisations. Um, councillors have been consulted on the list, we see the tech today. And some are taking the opportunity to become new of other areas and other issues across the municipality and, and related. So, um, I, I want to give the recommendation that councillors, when councillors, organisations are shown.
No more questions, councillors? The amount of movement, please. Councillor McPhee, say, councillor Young, do you speak to the motion, councillor McPhee?
Yeah, just quickly, Chair, as, um, as I said, I said the, um, you know, some councils are changing much to the community groups. I get to call them, but we do get around those councillors. We are the ones who have divided municipality now and the people have realised we have, we represent the whole municipality. All councillors are accountable to every way paid in the area. Not saying that if you've got a favourite councillor you want to talk to, if you have a poor work, then you can talk to them. But we all will take calls at any time about the issues in their area. This is just allowing councillors to learn about other areas and other issues.
Please, can I see it?
No.
Do you have a speaker for the motion? Yes.
Participation in the community groups is such an important part of being councillor. Reading to my notice the motion later on. It's how we learn about what's important to our community. Councillors come to their role with their own ideas, but it's by that engagement that you find out what the people actually prioritise themselves and therefore we get to advocate that in every way that we can.
Yeah, councillor McKay, any further speakers for the motion? Against the motion, the, uh, do you wish to close the debate? Please, hold on. Hold on. The vote, twice the vote. Question C, decisions which need action and remediation, quite uncertain, twenty one point one, one, two, three, report.
Thank you very much, Mr Chair. Um, as you see, these are the documents and agreements that have been filed and sealed. Um, by councillors and CEO and the, of the file to be verified by the council. And you see there is a big review. I will point out that the last one, this, they were actually placed like over caravan truck. It was for a three month extension. The caravan packing up was, um, to allow for a period of grace during the COVID period where obviously people were moving caravan up. So that was granted that three month extension.
Any questions, councillors? House for a move, please. Do you have councillor McKay, second date? Jeffrey, please, the motion, councillor McKay. Jeffrey. Yes, special vote, please, twice the vote. Very strange. On the C twenty one point two two, councillor said at least written. Get it right, Mr Carter, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Um, councillor DC, before you record the attendance of all of these events. The audience of the case. Thank you for your information.
Questions, councillors? Okay, please. Better one, twice the vote. Um, please. Question D, notices of motion, I can read twenty one point four, what is the effect of a smaller than?
You're right. Um, thank you, councillors. You'll see, I've, I've written, uh, gamble and I won't read it out. Uh, so I read out, I read out the motion to. Okay. I move that council write to the honourable Mary and Thomas Minister of Agriculture, Regional Development and the Honourable Leasing and Agriculture Minister for Water seeking state government contribution to co-fund the water and sewage infrastructure needs of our small town. Two, write to the Deputy Prime Minister, the Honourable Bartle Joyce Minister for Infrastructure Transport and Regional Development, requesting your support for regional development of this area by co-funding water and sewage infrastructure projects in small towns. Write to Lower Murray Water to gain their in principle support for effort to secure co-funding by state and federal governments of water and sewage projects. Water and sewage projects in our small town, they invite their continued engagement with this council. Four, write to the Minister for Uluru, Miss Ali Kappa, asking for her support for the funding of water infrastructure projects in Dandrop and in Pinelands. Five, write to the Honourable Peter Walsh, Member for Moira Plain, requesting your support for funding and potable water for North Nile, Woodwood and sewage infrastructure in Wurundjeri and back Lake Boga. Um, six, write to Dr Anne Webster, Member from Mally, seeking your support for federal co-funding for water and sewage infrastructure projects in Lake Boga, Wurundjeri, South Nile, Oates, Final and Woodwood, small town. Thank you.
Second, please. Yes, second to councillor.
Thank you. Um.
Do you want to ask a question? No, please, do it again. Do you want to make a call for more? Um, why are we nominating names or towns or missing any other towns?
Um, I suppose you're asking that question.
Yeah, we'll put the motion.
Sure, um. Water infrastructure is complex. We don't, they're not always known and defined exactly who of which communities are willing and definitely want that. And I do acknowledge there are some that are left out, so it's impossible for any other councillor to propose that we find a way of using some inclusive language. However, these are the small communities that I've been engaged with over my almost three years as a councillor. Uh, I'm, in, in addition to that, I am, uh, uh, aware that Wurundjeri, who I'm not engaged with, it is a priority of council, their sewage needs are a priority of council. Um, so I, and I am aware from discussions with you that Lake Boga is growing, they also have some sewage needs of a small part of their town. Also Robben Valley area, there probably are four regions that have needs. However, given that these towns have advocated. We are not least the town that has said, we know this large agricultural development, there's huge women in those areas. And the, uh, infrastructure deficits are holding those communities back. That's why I've landed them, but I don't think exclusively. There are, you know, like, there are other small communities that have some water infrastructure problems. Um, but I didn't feel the confidence to name without, without any consultation or endorsement.
Yes, yes. Do I move an amendment, Mr Mary? Do it again.
If I look at the sign, it's just changing if you were, um, number four. After it says water infrastructure projects from that point on of small towns in Hurlecrum. Other projects, they take in there as well. They take it in there as well, so projects, all small towns.
I'm just clarifying, in connection with the Swan Hills in council, municipality only?
Yeah.
Is there electricity?
Oh, there's. Oh, that's, that's, I'll be able to say. Um, the small towns in Swan Hill, Swan Hill municipality in her electorate. And forward. And take from North Nye from that point. Small towns in Swan Hill municipality in his electorate. Number six. Okay, I'm from Lake Boga, um, we're in small towns, I just take it a little towns. At last, they're that one. Uh, in, in small towns, throughout our municipality.
Who's had to accept that? Do you have any doubt, do you have some, councillor McKay?
That many, five, seven, I support it.
Well, you get to speak on it, whereas if we know that.